Uh, there is an agenda here. We are supposed to, um, Denise?
Yeah.
Do you want, need a call for me to turn on the camera?
Uh, yeah, go ahead when you're ready, yeah?
Okay, we're ready? Cameras on?
So I don't have an agenda, so if, if you just wanna go ahead and, uh, flow with it and I'll speak when I feel like need to, okay?
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sounds good. Um, so it's 7:37, we're gonna call this meeting of the Ronsburg Select Board to order. Uh, present, Paul Katz, Miles Inland, uh, we have Denise Snolls on the phone. Uh, we don't have an agenda tonight, but we're here to talk about Tom's response, um, to the coronavirus pandemic. Turn it over to him.
I just wanna make sure that we have a few things covered and we get the will of the board for how we're gonna proceed with a few things. Part of this depends on how frequently the board wants to decide to meet, given the circumstances. Uh, with the recommendation of six-foot distancing, the capacity of the conference room is now significantly reduced. Um, the municipal association has come forth with guidance that we can, um, change some rules going forward under these circumstances if the chair of the board calls it to be an emergency and states the reason why. So, um, changes include more than a quorum being available by telephone or video conferencing. Currently, a quorum has to be present in the room. Now they're suggesting that one or two people be in the room. I would suggest two for safety, two plus a minute's acres, spread out. Um, and then other people can call in to participate in the meeting. Um, public can be in the hallway in chairs six feet apart. Um, the, you know, the public's right to the meeting can be to call in or, you know, we can, we can hope that they will submit comments in writing, if they have comments in writing, for things like land use, um, proposals, but for things like select board meetings, it might be better to have them in the hall. Having them be able to hear is enough, and then we can pay attention for public comment and give them out.
Do we have a phone that allows multiple people to call in?
Um, the only phones that'll do that is, are gonna be cell phones. So you're limited by capacity of the cell phones that are present in the room. So one of my suggestions is that we close for a while, but while we're closing, we are looking at, um, ways that maybe our phone company can give us higher quality phones for if somebody is gonna call in. The speakerphone is really poor quality for both the person on the phone and the people in the meeting. So cell phones are a little bit better, but the distance is still a problem, I think, with people in different parts of the room. It's gonna be challenging to have a productive meeting with everybody understanding what's going on. So, um, so. Tom Clark, um, as health officer, sent an email to the board this afternoon recommending that we close the town hall and postpone all meetings for at least two weeks. Clearly, this is gonna be, that's gonna be insufficient, but, um...
It must be ghost.
You know?
So I would think that at minimum, we want to close the town hall public.
Well, that's my other...
I don't know if you want, I mean, probably still want businesses to go on, to buy top lots or something.
Yeah, exactly, that's what we were thinking.
But I think, in my opinion, I think they're trying to limit the most possible.
Yes.
And I don't, you don't have people coming to the police station, do you?
Well, we do, we've actually changed our operation. Uh, we're not letting any non-essential folks in the PD. Um, I even, I've even instructed my part-time police officers not to report to PD unless they are working. Um, we're mandated by law to continue to register sex offenders on a quarterly basis. They're allowed to come into the lobby only, and we, uh, do all paperwork through the pass window.
Perfect.
So...
I think most of the town office function's gonna be handled in a similar manner. Um, that you can either mail in all your things and they'll mail you something back, or you can put it in drop box and they'll mail you something back.
Yeah, perfect.
So, you know, encouraging people to call and email questions and issues and for something like a new car or something that really has to be done, or somebody can try and make one-on-one appointments, and I think just that message will kind of, um, communicate the gravity of the situation and discourage people from just dropping by. So, um, it's up to the board what the, what the timeframe is on that and what the messaging is, but I, I do think that would be helpful for at least a while.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Um, I mean, I'm not sure what a while looks like. Did Tom have a, a recommendation?
He said minimally two weeks.
Two weeks? And then we could play it by ear at that point.
And see how it evolves. It doesn't have to be, um, you know, we, we can continue to evaluate things as we go forward. Um, meetings are, you know, select board meetings, I think, are manageable in as much as they have to happen, that they can happen in the conference room in a manner as private public in the hallway. Other meetings, um, pose other challenges. Other meetings tend to be larger groups for the most part, but land use boards, um, we're up against, um, property rights and people, you know, we, we can delay those and postpone them, but ultimately, we can't for six months or, you know, I'm not sure that for six months we can deny somebody a right to process with subdividing or developing their land. So those boards, because of the nature of sharing documents and looking together at plans and hearing from the public, um, you know, as much as we can think about technological solutions to, um, virtual meetings would be helpful and having people submit in writing.
Can I just make a, you guys have the G-Sweep, which includes Google Hangouts?
Yes.
Which is a video conferencing solution?
Yes. It's more about the Wi-Fi and having computers to carry that out, but yes, I, I wanna look at things like that, 'cause I think that's a great solution if our Wi-Fi won't support it and we can get people to bring devices that can handle it.
Did the Wi-Fi get enhanced upstairs? It was...
It's not that it got enhanced upstairs, it got moved upstairs because it wasn't a police department, and that was diminishing the signal by being, you know, separated, so now it should be better.
Yeah, it does definitely seem, seems better. So, so the decisions we have to make tonight are about town hall?
Town hall meetings. If the board, if the select board is gonna meet less frequently, then I, then I would encourage you to consider, um, giving me short-term emergency authority over welfare so that I can handle that as needed. I anticipate an increase in welfare, given the economic effect of what's going on. Purchasers, um, Paul, the select board was, um, nearly at the point of approving a revision to the purchasing policy. Currently, department heads can spend up to $200 within their budget for budgeted expenses without the authority of the select board. The select board was reviewing amendments to the policy which would allow an increase up to $500.
There you go. Sounds good.
So you haven't had a chance to review that, and I'll get you the language for that, but Denise had revisions to the policy, so I don't have those. I can give you what we've been looking at, but, um, a short-term revision of $500, I think would be helpful.
Let's, let's take these things one at a time so we can...
Yeah.
Yeah, I also let, so I'm not gonna...
So for town hall, I, I agree we should close it to public access for...
Two weeks and...
At least two weeks.
I agree. So Denise?
I'm in favor of closing town hall, yes.
Okay.
So I think by consensus, we...
Okay.
Agree to that.
And obviously, you proposed, like tomorrow morning, you proposed town hall, closed public, if you ever noticed.
On the, on the door?
Business will run, the deal, all that stuff, right there.
Yep.
Now, I just wanted to make sure it's clear, though, that we're closing the town hall, and individuals are gonna work as much as they can. Is that correct?
Yes, I would say that... Sorry, I need to interrupt you, but my, my suggestion would be that people can continue to carry out business inside, answering the phones, responding to emails and doing whatever we normally do.
I mean, government's still gonna run, and you guys are separated enough.
We have good working space for this, these conditions, yes.
Yeah, I think that they are separated or can be separated enough to work within, you know, the recommended distance right now, um, 'cause we still have to get stuff done for sure, but definitely leaving, um, the public out as much as possible is, uh, that that's for our weight.
Okay. Does the select board like carry on its regular, every other week schedule, including this coming Monday night?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't know what you think, Denise, but I, I think, you know, it's also kind of imperative that, that we keep, keep things rolling with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that we can also, it's, you know, that's something we can be separated as well, so I think we need to really, but one of the things that, you know, I, I might suggest on a temporary basis is that we give the, is all of the content in the front of you?
The...
Yes.
Okay, I'm nothing in basis to increase their, their ability to buy something at $500 on a temporary basis, that's when we can actually finish doing the, um, purchasing policy. And then maybe, um, a basis to give Caroline up to, um, $2,000 to be able to purchase something if we can't get something there quickly. That's good, that's recognized, but I think that we should at least, and so if we get through this, right, that we do that.
Yep, to, totally agree.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need to make a vote, Caroline, or...
Um, please vote on that last one, yes.
So I, I'll move that we, um, increase the spending limit for department heads to $500.
All right.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All the ayes have it? Um, and additionally, I'll make a motion that we authorize a town administrator to spend up to $2,000 with a board approval.
Or, or at least give authorization for someone you know in the department, is what I was making sure I did, just on an emergency basis.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second, I'll second that, too.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But can I make one more, I think that's always over, can I make it just a plea to the department head to please watch her spending going forward because we don't know if this is gonna be the whole picture of it, but really keeping it down to necessities and, you know, emergency purchasing for a little bit, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, I think we need to, we need to start being more careful, you know, fulfilling our obligations, but, um, now's not the time to throw extravagant orders for $500.
No, if, if we don't know what, if this is gonna cost us, you know, it could cost us, it's a big cost there, so I just wanted to be sure that we're just, we're only buying exactly what we need right now and not buying something that got approved just in the budget just recently. We just may have to wait a little bit, just to see where this goes, that's all.
I, I think that we can, I agree with that.
And was there a, is there a wire and cell phone dispute, is that not canceled? Is that coming?
Yes, yes.
That's already canceled, yes.
Well, it's...
Oh, I saw that.
Well, they postponed it for a couple of days.
I shouldn't say that, excuse me, both of them did that. Thank you. Okay, what else is...
Okay, so, um, the other thing I'd like clarity about is, um, some of our employees qual-, um, earn sick and vacation time, others are of part-time status that do not accrue sick time. Um, if people are feeling unwell anyway, we would wanna encourage them to stay home. So, um, should that happen, can we extend pay for them to not be incentivized to come to work?
I think absolutely. It's, it's not fair to, you know...
Yes, I'm saying yes.
Yeah. What do you think, Denise?
Well, one thing you don't want is someone coming in, 'cause if you, they think you're not gonna pay someone, it's gonna spread the sickness around, so that should be a no issue.
I, I'd be, I think that any illness that's major didn't stand out, absolutely. We want our employees to be home, get well resting and get well before they come back in, and just encourage them to do that, and we do.
Okay. Um, the only thing, the only other thing that I, I just wanna plant the seed about, I'm not expecting a decision about this tonight, but we are being told that this is likely to extend into July or August, um, camp ral-ing, and, and whether or not camp ral-ing should continue, because if the schools are clo-, the schools are closed, if the schools continue to be closed, it may not be wise to have summer camp, I'm sorry to say. So, um, I just, you know, I, I don't think that's wise discussion at this point, but just something to think about.
We do have to, no, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Denise.
We have to make a decision soon on this, though, because we don't wanna start taking people's money and then having to turn around and give it back.
Right.
So I know that they were very close getting their online registration going, and not that I think we have to make it tonight, but we do have to make it soon. Um, and I, and I agree that we don't want the gathering of, and they're letting, you know, very low numbers of people or something, clearly it's over 100 that go to camp ral-ing, and the staff, and you don't wanna hire the staff if you don't have the program.
Well, I think we're gonna have trouble hiring a rep director in this current atmosphere, too.
Yeah, no, Celia has a comment.
Um, the committee chairman for the rep committee has asked that we have a meeting if possible, so I'd be interested in what your board thinks about that, but one of the discussion items for that meeting is to come up with a plan for camp ral-ing, and she's already asked that registration be delayed until we have our meeting and come up with our plan.
So that goes back to, we, you know, town hall's closed for at least two weeks. What, what is the status of other meetings?
I would say as necessary, I think this is a necessary, you know, we're in this limbo period where we're ready to register, unless we decide tonight to say no, I think, I think they should be...
Well, so my only comment would be, in as much as the new capacity of the conference room can handle, and to encourage, you know, at least half of the group to call in rather than come in, and the rest will be dispersed throughout the room.
Yeah, I think that, so...
When is it?
Wednesday, we plan it.
The committee chair put out Thursday, and at least one person has responded negatively that they can't come, I'm not sure about the rest of the committee.
I didn't hear what you said. What is the next meeting?
Thursday, potentially Thursday, but...
It hasn't been set yet, but the committee chair has suggested this coming Thursday.
I'm sorry, did you hear it? Is it this Thursday?
This Thursday, but still not, not completely set.
Well, we should please move this Thursday off, for sure.
The one concern with moving it back is that we have breaks that we were thinking to put in by the end of March, and we would need to have them approved by the committee and then by the select board, and if you're going to meet next Monday, your following would be in April after the due date.
Are you looking for my comments, or did he already say that?
No, but I, I mean, I'm, I'm new, so I, I just, pretty much first place next to you at a town type of meeting, so I don't think I don't need anything. That's just my thought.
I, I think that's definitely the intent.
I just wanna bring you up to date, 'cause you didn't hear Celia's comment, that she's concerned about, um, grant deadlines due at the end of March, and, um, so meeting this week so that the committee can confirm before the board would hear them. It sounds like Paul and Miles are more interested in shutting down swiftly for two weeks meetings.
I, I agree with shutting down for two weeks for meetings. I don't think that if we miss a grant, we miss a grant. I mean, I think it's more important that we make sure that everything is safe and down for two weeks, so I don't think that we should be doing, we shouldn't have a meeting for two weeks. That's my opinion. My mandate this week, 'cause I can't drive yet, so...
Okay.
The chances there goes on kind of small, but we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
So, I mean, I know this is a different subject, but we just heard this happened in some states, it spread the worst, you know, there's like Massachusetts, it's shut.
All, that's what I'm saying?
Camp bars, yeah.
All bars, so we went to find the food as a takeout, so, uh, I think they're starting to be, they're trying to stop the big wave, so everybody should try to do it.
You just touched my face.
I do it all the time, it's worse out than I, to look at it. All right, so we all, we're all, we're...
Okay. Um, so then the only thing I have for the board outside of whatever the department heads might wanna address the board about is, um, that the budget has passed, so, um, whenever the budget passes, that doesn't mean the board automatically wants to do all the things that the budget included, so before you are the, um, pay raises that were budgeted for in the budget. Denise has seen them, and she's fine with them if, um, if you two wanna sign off on.
Yeah. We'd pleasure to inform, I appreciate you, but just a summary.
So one is for the police, so that Bob can sign off on his people, and also for the board.
That's just the local.
And then all that's everybody who's non-police.
Uh, do we, do we make motions for these, or...
Um, yes, that would be good.
Okay. So I'll, I'll move that we approve the raises, um, for the police department? It, well...
As presented?
Yeah, as presented, okay. So?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Uh, sorry. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll also move that, uh, we approve the, the budgeted raises for the rest of the town, uh, employees, as presented.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And sign that, too? We're good? Okay.
Okay, that's all I have. I don't know if the department heads, I think Mark had a PO for you, there may be other business.
Yeah, one other thing before I get to that is, um, I was gonna have Gene strike him in. You guys all saw who he was, he's the director for New York Angels. He was sitting all day in the front row, but he had to go to work, I was gonna have him, he's not due to him, so we all know who he is, right, 'cause he works for us, basically, right? And the other thing I just wanted to touch bases on again is, did they go over that and, you know, what their actual response was going to be for any COVID calls? Just so you're aware, how this is gonna be handled on their end and our end.
Yeah.
It's the same thing we're doing here, it's all distancing, the whole bit, but if they get the first call, as they will, they're really not gonna call for PD or for fire till they find out what they need there, 'cause their biggest thing is they don't want any more exposure. They're only gonna send one person in that contacted the patient, and if they can walk a patient out and put them in the ambulance, that is gonna be what they wanna do. They may even call, uh, medical control and find out whether or not they even need to be in there, or they may say, no, send them back in the house and have a call their own physician. Hospital doesn't want these people either. They get, like, all the bars up, and you can't just walk into the hospital anymore, you have to go through two points of entry, 'cause they have no confirmed cases, they have nobody in the hospital right now that's even supposed to have been exposed yet, as we were talking about in there, and they wanna try to prevent it from that stuff. So, uh, if we get called, us as a fire department, or even a chief's people get called, um, my thought always was, and it happens on, I'd say, a regular basis, but often enough that the ambulance is a hard time finding out where they're going, and whether it be PD unit or ours, just to go there, we don't wanna be involved, if nothing, we'll be a marker, so they know where they're going, especially those guys, 'cause they're gonna be down as quick because they're here. And I had a talk with Gene about, he said, do you think the need, the need is there? You need to start us a little bit more, just so we can get the idea to try to get going. One thing with all this stuff here that the state is showing, you know, CDC and all, one of the biggest components is, and it's a huge component in anything that has to do with this line of work, is your documentation, and if it's not done in 100% specific ways with certain, uh, highlighted words or keynotes that you include in your documentation, if it ever got far enough that it had to go to any sort of insurance claim or something, of course, insurance companies don't wanna pay for anything anyway, but if you don't get to this point and do it correctly, you won't even get in the ballpark. And this is coming from Primex, because Damien Tufa meetings, the Primex people today gave, gave him some of the key words that we're gonna do, and, and by this in here is, uh, what we need to follow as an EMS provider, a first responder, make, and you also, Chief, is having some sort of directive in documentation and writing on what exactly you're gonna do. Uh, our personnel are out there going over that right now, as far as what goes, who goes, what they're gonna wear, everything that they're gonna do, so that's all in black and white, so there's no questions. Basically, what we're gonna do as our department is the only vehicle that initially is gonna leave is utility, with two people, that's all that's on. If there's no officer on that piece, one of the officers, as soon as they get in here, will go in the car, but only to be back as a marker, but also just to make sure that the directive is followed, 'cause I could, it could be a couple of my guys that they, they're skilled enough, they may not be perfect on their decision-making end, so the officer will be there just to make sure that's all seen, and maybe nothing more than be there 10 minutes, the ambulance goes, we come back, but we're gonna be limiting our exposure as much as we're all trying to do here, as you are at town hall, that's what we're gonna do as a department. I mean, there's nothing that, but that doesn't mean two weeks or a month, this isn't becoming a heck of a lot more complex, I say, people...
You know, we got someone coming back from Vegas, I think.
What's that?
You know, we got somebody coming back from Vegas.
And I heard that there was no distancing in Vegas, 'cause I know somebody else that just came back from Vegas, and that doesn't exist, so who knows what happens? I had a guy that just came back from Chicago. He didn't have to go through those long lines that you may have seen, he went a different way. But we've got everything pretty much totally by the lines on what we have to have here as far as what we need to do to cover our end of it, not only from our response directives, but also from our documentation factors. Those are the two biggest components for us, so, but it's gonna be on paper, so we're not gonna, you know, even pull there gaps or anything, so on the FD side, we're all gonna develop. Any, any questions on that stuff, or for, I don't know? Damien, Sean and I worked for like three hours yesterday going through all the stuff, getting ready to go, making sure, and when you and I had a conversation, that's why I kinda wanted, thought it would be a good idea, just you as the governing body and whatnot, and our, and so we're all on the same page in what we're supposed to be doing and what we're looking at, so, did we achieve that?
Good job, thank you. It's a lot of work.
And that's why I wanted to get the ambulance in here. We're also gonna carry that out a little bit more, with the training and stuff, and Gene seems to be pretty well on the ball with everything and what he wants to do, so this has been, still, I think a lot more stuff, I mean, we pay them to be here, so can sort of utilize that a little bit more.
I don't know if I can add more information to you, Mark, but I'm on the cog team, the Chicago, so I'm involved with Chicago, the rest there and stuff, and federal government, so we're getting updated.
All the time, right?
All the time. We made a big, you know, big...
So, I was listening tonight, pretty much it was very, very much similar to all the stuff we've done so far.
Yeah, and that's kinda our one to go, and it just changes all the time, but there's this one piece right here that Jamie highlighted, that she hadn't seen yet, and all her research, and I printed it off before I came up here tonight, it came into my email at four o'clock this afternoon. And this is from, so what Stratford, what the state has done, especially in Stratford County, it's on the fire and EMS side of it, is they divided it, each county has a representative, and our woman named is Mary Kerr, there's 12 fire departments that, you know, 12 chiefs within the county, and she's the one that gets all this information, rather than updating her and then being able to control the, the flow of information within the state, that's the state is done, on the fire side of things, is this person is a kind of out of contact person. So, and I guess, Chief, did you order a bunch of stuff through Homeland Security for us, for supplies and whatnot?
Well, all the weekend, on the series on those security survey, requesting, um, communities, let them know how many masks you had, gloves, face protection, all works. Uh, so I called the, the fire department yesterday, spoke with Sean, and, uh, I've, uh, told them what we had and what we would like to have, and she's just wanting to mask all this, um, and it's up to Homeland Security at this point to try to come up with all of that equipment to start spreading out to all the communities. Doesn't mean we're gonna get it, but at least they know what we have on hand now and what we're asking for.
So, we have, uh, we dug through a lot of our stuff, and a lot of what you can do when you go into these kind of emergencies, mimic a hazmat type of incident, and we had some full suits, we have masks, we have gloves, we have enough stuff to get in these things, even though they're not in there yet, that we can respond and fully protect it. The one thing that, um, is pretty much required that we don't have, and we're having a very hard time finding, is a certain type of rest parade, which is an N95, which captures 99% of the type of particulates that you need, that you're supposed to. We're still working to try to find that stuff, but everything else, we're good to go, at least we have something that can fight some level of protection, we're just not the best at, but that's what we've requested through the chief, and we made a request. Hopefully, it's a quicker way on that stuff. Other than that, we're, we're, we're right, we're good, as far as...
You know, another thing that, when we talked, and I'm sorry, George, I was gonna mention when we talked earlier, is, I know we're not faking it, unless something changes drastically on closing the transport station.
Right.
But like you said, the people...
But, like you said, the people, even though the guys are very, not all, not all there, but also like, well, I, I knew you can't say, hey, stop talking, people around, and I'm, I'm great, it's perfect, and they do.
Yeah, I mean, I can't see closing it, but then you're gonna have [inaudible] storage at home, and you're gonna have, you're gonna have a bigger issue with [inaudible]. Yeah. So, I mean, we can keep them, we'll put a sign up if we have to, we'll just drop and go.
Yeah. That'd be perfect.
I think we should probably put a note on the town website.
I'll make a sign up tomorrow, put up that, just drop and go, no hanging around.
Now, we are getting updates daily from the emergency operations center, and, um, uh, last Friday, today, they've gone with [inaudible] tomorrow and this Friday, I will participate in the conference call. And I believe that they're not participating in conference calls as well, so, so we are getting updates from public health and homeless security and everybody, at least every couple of days, so.
Is there anything, Rob, that you feel that you need, that you don't have to deal with this?
Well, things that, like the fire department, you know, we need the mask, uh, we have plenty of gloves, they've got plenty of gloves for now, um, the gowns, the booties, eye protection, we're all, we're all using more of that. And unfortunately, all those things are scarce to find right now, if you didn't order them a month ago, you're not gonna be able to find them right now, but hopefully the state, through their resources, will be able to replenish and supply this stuff to us.
Alright. Do you have a P O, wanna do that now?
Yeah.
Is it, uh, under five hundred? When you started saying that, I should have looked at you or something.
Couple different things also, here's, here's one receipt from something I got here today, and also, here is a letter from one of our members, um, Matt Sylvester. He was with us maybe a year, and he needed affiliation with the fire department so he can go to recruit school. Where recruit school is usually like thirteen hundred dollars, because he was with an affiliated fire department, it was seventeen hundred dollars. He E S N's graduated, spent some other time with us now, he's one of the guys that I gave him toward, that he got hired permanently by force of the fire department a couple, three months ago. Well, I'm giving it to you, because this is his receipt for what he did, but he's also gonna reimburse the community for the seventeen hundred and seventy dollars that he paid for school.
That's great.
No, I said, it's not something you have to do, right? Yeah, I guess he doesn't need to sign anything, but I just wanted to know that that's something that he's.
That's awesome.
He's gonna go back, you know, he has to go to U G O general fund [inaudible].
Yes, yes.
It surprised me when I opened it today and I, I talked to him, I didn't even look at it. I will, there's some.
Nice gesture.
Well, we, we helped him out at his goal, and we wanted to see, and, uh, he's willing to pay back, great, because you don't see that. Um, the one P O that I have, and Sean said you guys will only pass on the craze, eighteen, thirteen, if, I'm a Warren Arrows, we had two to fire department, first one was for education equipment, and I know we just had a discussion about, um, trying not to spend any money, but this is on the Warren Arrows side, because we jumped on the one that passed for education equipment, because of ours being so old, and there's a bunch of positives with it, because I had some, uh, quotes here from last fall that were above thirty-nine thousand dollar range for what the equipment is that we needed. Um, Sean had a talk with the gentleman today that's gonna be able to get it for us, so we're gonna get all the equip, excuse me, the equipment we need, plus some added benefits, because AMK is running a promotional type of scenario at this point, where if we spent so much, we could choose some other items. So, basically, for the thirty thousand dollars, which is what the, uh, Warren Arrows for, we're gonna, um, get about thirty-nine thousand dollars worth of equipment. And that's a complete replacement of those tools that we can get out there, we're, we're getting a new cover, new spreaders, uh, the batteries, the chargers, we're gonna get an electric arena with an extension kit, uh, windshield removal kit, uh, like a sawzall kit and lighting kit, and that's a huge upgrade for everything that we have now, using our [inaudible].
Alright, this other thing on Johnson Light, they changed about it, it's still colors Johnson Light, they.
It still works, people will still know if you wanna use that term, that's fine.
Um, I'll move a purchase order one eight, uh, one three to Craig, uh, Rover Shaw.
Yes.
Um, for the, I was gonna say next, break. Equipment, um, because there's a whole, there's a whole list here, um, for thirty thousand dollars.
Now, I can't [inaudible].
Um, if you second it, and then, um, we'll discuss, um, with Denise as well, I forget, Denise is on the phone, um, and then we'll, I'll sign that.
Because we want, I want to get that inscribed as soon as I could, because there's a timestamp on the promotion which they're on, and in order for us to get this, what was the timestamp, sometime, uh, April, did you say, Sean?
Yeah, the gear has to be shipped by the end of April, and there are about a thirty day lead time to shipping, so.
So we want to show you there, you say [inaudible].
And this is coming out of the C I P, so it's not under operating.
A Warren Arrows pass.
It's all C I P, right, thirty thousand, um, Denise?
Yes.
Did you, did you hear any of that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um, any, any input?
Whatever, it, I mean, it is coming out of C I P, so it's not actually much, so, I'm okay with that, I just, you know, we do have to make sure though, we start, you know, not ordering stuff, but if this is a time deal and it's C I P money, it's already, we can't get to [inaudible] anyway.
Right, right, okay, I'll set that off.
Yep.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 For what we have is, is not even [inaudible]. We'll keep these calls, and we'll be able to handle.
Second hold this piece in New Hampshire?
Yep.
Can we put it in a museum now?
We're still gonna keep it on board, we're still gonna use it, because that can still have some use if we need to do a certain thing in the operation of, of electrocution, that can still perform. That's pretty all I got, I was gonna mention, we've also done some work on our other, uh, Warren Arrows, maybe I shouldn't boil it with that in here.
That's new.
Well, we've done some legwork on, uh, on the new forestry, but, uh, I'll just, I'll leave it at that, we did legwork.
Chief, George, okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, I will open it up to public comment at this point. Okay, that's great, um, we should probably also, um, nominate board officers.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a meeting, but, but we're leaving them, so, yes.
So every time there's, we're changing the makeup of the board, we, we reestablish, um, roles.
Alright.
So I will nominate Denise Knowles as the board chair.
I'll second that very nicely.
Right, um, all in favor? Uh, I, she went both, okay. And I'll, I'll also nominate, um, Paul Cass as, um, select board clerk here. There are three positions, chair, vice chair, and clerk, okay?
I'll take that, sorry.
Okay, no worries, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll still make Miles' [inaudible].
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome, just because there are certain goals at this point, there's a different chair.
We can do the boards' roles and committees with, um, you know, budget committee and, and lamp, and all those things, one thing.
Right, yeah.
Okay, that's great.
Okay, um, so the time is eight fifteen, I will, um, turn, oh, to join in, so, look, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.